We look like we are ready to go. And if we remember, I guess Council President joins us, so we'll carry on. But I'll go ahead and open this study session. I don't think we need to do roll calls. Is that right, Mr. McClatchy?
That's right. It's a study session. You're not taking legislative action, right?
He is silent. Okay.
Candace, I'm just keeping track of who's here, so you don't have to worry.
Well, hello, everyone, and welcome to Council President. I'm Councilwoman Candace Mub substituting for Council President Banks today, who hopefully will join us with two items on the agenda today. One is a presentation from the U District. The second item is CARES Act funding briefing. However, Council President Banks is requesting that, and if he is not able to attend, we will not be able to get to that today. So we have a couple of folks here from planning, and they are excited to bring us the update on the South U District plan. And we will start with Christopher Green.
This is Tyrrell Black from Planning, and I'll just give a few intro points.
That's what I'm talking about, Tyrrell.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Well, he's pulling up his PowerPoint there. So in 2019, we began spring public meetings on this project. And then March 2020, we had done mailed notice. We were all ready to go to hearing with Plan Commission, and we had to take a pause for COVID. So the Plan Commission, we noticed the hearing and had the hearing July 8th and July 22nd with the Plan Commission. So Plan Commission has heard this. They're forwarding this to you with a recommendation to approve a vote of nine to one. And so the findings, I believe, in your packet, there's also a minority reported dissenting opinion of the one member who voted against in your packet. So with that, I'm turning it over to Chris Green. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. Can everybody see the first presentation slide?
I can see it.
All right, great. All right, so yeah, we have a lot of different pieces of the subarea plan to cover today. So I will go through this as kind of an overview. There's a lot of information in the council packets. Mostly, we'll talk about the ordinance to adopt map amendments. Some of the slides you'll notice have reference to some of the exhibits in the ordinance. So those are probably the easiest place to find the maps in your packet. But then there's also staff report pages cited there. So if you want to go back and read further on those as well, then we've got those pages highlighted as well. So in terms of the project, there's the ways to learn more, if anybody's kind of following along, as well, there's the Plan Commission recommendation, staff report, comments and testimony, and then the project webpage. So there's a lot of different ways, including contacting myself and to learn more about this project. The study area for the South U District, it is a smaller, a little over 200-acre portion of the larger 770-acre University District. So the South University District is directly across the BNSF railroad tracks to the south of the WSU Spokane campus. You see the Gateway Bridge there in yellow. It goes south to I-90, and then from east to west, it goes from Division to the Hamilton Ranch. There's been a lot of planning in this area. Some of you are probably very, you know, familiar with some of these planning efforts. There've been studies and around market. There's been some strategic plans done by the University District Development Association. So a long kind of legacy in planning, and as the years have gone by, a lot of those plans have focused on sort of what we call the T. And it's Sherman and Sprague is kind of a focal point in this area, and they come together at a T intersection. So that's been identified in a lot of these plans previously. Let's see. However, the zoning is general commercial, 150. We'll talk a little bit about more about what that means. But in terms of that T, it hasn't really been implemented, that concept, in any zoning maps or other regulations to this point. So in this process, one of the things we're looking to do is to test that previous vision with current stakeholders, see if that's still sort of part of the vision, or if there's differences about that or refinement. And if it is still a vision to implement it, there were some issues addressed, or some issues identified with barriers to development in some of those earlier studies, such as floor area ratio for uses that aren't residential, and off-street parking, I'll talk a little bit about. And then making sure also that this is compatible with both the recent infrastructure and private investments in this area, but also the businesses and properties that have been in that area for decades. Tyrrell talked a little bit about the community engagement timeline. You can kind of see it laid out here. Fortunately, a lot of this happened in 2019, so we were able to engage a lot of the stakeholders in person and work with a lot of the organizations. There's a lot of different organizations that work in this area, a lot of different types of stakeholders. In some ways, it's similar to like downtown in terms of it's, there's a lot of different groups that work in this area. So really tried to make sure everybody was at the table for that. So the proposal itself, there's two pieces to it, and there's two pieces of legislation that are coming up. So one is the subarea plan, which is in draft form, and it would be, it's proposed to be adopted by a resolution that would recognize it as a policy framework. So this is more the high-level conceptual recording of that first phase of the outreach that we did in this planning process. And then the ordinance is mostly what we'll talk about. This actually would enact changes to the comprehensive plan land use map, zoning, and different overlays. So that's the implementing action. So again, the draft subarea plan is more at a concept level. The map that ended up being developed in the subarea planning process did really, again, strongly confirm that T concept, and with the gateway bridge landing, kind of landing right at that intersection too. It's just another element that really focuses on that area. But then the ordinance to kind of make some of these changes happen in terms of our code. I'll go through these with maps in a little more detail, but it's a comprehensive plan land use, land use plan map amendment for that area within the T, a zone change. And then there's three overlay maps that would change. One with streetscape improvements, or what we call complete streets. One is a surface parking limited overlay, and then the downtown design review threshold, because with downtown zoning, that's part of implementing that, is setting those thresholds. So the first set map and that set of maps is Exhibit A of the ordinance and shown here. This is what Plan Commission ended up recommending as the boundaries of that area that would change in the land use map from general commercial to downtown. So kind of at that framework level. The zone change that would implement it is from what the current zoning is in that area. General commercial with a 150-foot height limit, so GC 150, to DTU, which is downtown university. That's very similar to the zoning in most areas of downtown, but it's the same zoning as the WSU Spokane campus also. But then keeping in the southeast and southwest corners, general commercial 150 zoning. So there's a few differences between the zones. In terms of height, there's really not that much of a difference. One's measured in feet and one in stories. 150 feet in height and 12 stories is pretty similar. There are currently no buildings in that area that are anywhere close to either of these height limits. And that may happen someday, but 150 feet has been allowed for a long time in that area. One of the big ones is floor area ratio. So this doesn't apply to residential, but for commercial uses. And thinking of commercial uses that would potentially go higher up, like offices, labs, classroom space, and things that would support the universities, but more on the, you know, private or supporting side. The floor area ratio of those is limited to this 2.5 floor area ratio that you see in the left orange column here. So it makes it very difficult, especially on a small parcel, to build much of a building. So that goes up quite a bit in the downtown university zone. Both of these zones allow quite a range of uses. On certain street types with the complete street designations that we'll talk about, some uses in the downtown, so like things like drive-throughs, auto sales and repair, and things like outdoor storage that often go with industrial or light industrial uses, aren't allowed in the downtown university zone, but they're actually really similar in terms of allowed uses overall. Housing in these two, one thing this is, I wanted to emphasize is that the floor area ratio limit does not apply to residential. So it's actually unlimited floor area ratio for housing, for residential in either of these zones. So that 150-foot or 12-story height limit, that's the limit in effect for a residential building already in that zone and within the DTU. So in looking for places to put the DTU, one of the concerns was where is, where are these commercial uses that are larger going to be most suitable and most needed versus just housing? Because that, at this point, housing can go anywhere in the district at a large scale, and in the GC doesn't compete as much with that higher intensity, like office use. There were a few optional extensions. So the original staff and consultants recommendations had two areas that were being considered. Plan Commission recommended adopting this first one. So this is the area in yellow you see reflected on the Exhibit A, Exhibit A and B now. They also looked at an area along Pacific Avenue. They heard some testimony that property owners in that area that maybe the, that was like a good future idea, but maybe that area's not quite ready for that transition in terms of the uses that are there and the development intensity yet. So their recommendation was just this first one. When applying a downtown zone, there are several overlays that go with it, including DTU. These overlays can be extended over all the DTU-zoned areas, some of it or none of it, and it gives an opportunity to set some policy tiles. Some of them offer those policy choices. Some are more a matter of just implementing the zone. So one of the big choices in terms of the policy was off-street parking requirements. And this is something that we heard about in all of our, all of our open houses comments. This was probably the thing we heard about the most from stakeholders. There are other projects going on. So Parking Services is looking at how on-street parking is managed in that area. U District's Public Development Authority is looking at, you know, how they could potentially work on a shared off-street parking project. But this specifically with the zoning is what would be required for a new development in the area. So the GC zone, then the staff report talks quite a bit about this. The GC zone breaks that down by use. The DTU zone, it's just one space per 1,000 square feet for everything, and for almost all uses, that's a pretty big reduction in the amount of, minimum amount of parking that's required. But currently, all the downtown zones also have a no minimum parking overlay that goes with them. And that would, that would actually take that requirement to zero. It still allows developers to put in parking for new developments, but doesn't require it. And so that was, that was, came up, you know, in Plan Commission, it was one of the options. It was presented at open houses, and Plan Commission ultimately did not recommend extending the DTU zone and not using the overlay and just having the kind of intermediate reduction of parking.
Chris, could I ask a question? This is Lori Kinnear.
Yes.
On the parking piece, I've heard from some of the business owners that they were concerned about losing street parking, especially the businesses along East Sprague. So how are you addressing that, and is there a way to put parking or a parking, is there a way to put a parking structure somewhere in there that would accommodate, so we wouldn't have to worry about so much off-street parking?
Yeah, so a couple of things that, that were, like in the staff report, we talked a little bit about this as rationale for recommending that DTU zone without the overlay and kind of going through that middle ground. One of the, two of those reasons kind of relate to that. One is just, we heard a lot of feedback about concern about new developments without parking, and that could spill over very quickly into that already very strained on-street parking supply. The other thing was if new development is coming in and has some parking requirement to meet, it would potentially encourage their participation in a shared, a shared parking, you know, solution for that area, potentially that involves some of their neighbors. Whereas if they have no requirement, they could, I mean, financing comes up in that a lot, but they could potentially opt out if they don't have any requirements and just leave everyone to fend for themselves, sort of. But if they have a lower, but still existing requirement, they have a, they have, they have a parking obligation that they still need to work on with the rest of the property owners.
Thanks.
Hey, Chris?
Yeah?
With, so I know right now, like where the catalyst is, a lot of the parking that is, basically keeping them in compliance is from that lot C that's right there, kind of adjacent. And I know there's a lot of concerns that if that gets developed, essentially, a lot of that off-street parking is near impossible to be in compliance. I'm just wondering, like whether it's catalyst or any of the other already permitted projects that are in that area, what, how many parking spaces would they need under this DTU zone requirement of one per 1,000 square feet? Do you know about how many square foot, feet those various projects are going to kind of add up to?
I could, I could kind of run that number. I know for some of them, there is a adjustment for proximity to transit and infrastructure like the pedestrian bridge. So a few of the projects have gotten that, and it is, it's actually closer to that one per 1,000. I believe one project actually requested that one per 1,000 is their, is their ratio.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to find out kind of what that, what the changes would look like under the DTU zone versus what's there now.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can get that together.
Great.
So the complete street system, this is, it's, despite the name, it's different than, we have another section of complete streets in our code that deal more with the actual streets than the design. This is part of the downtown zoning code and deals mostly with what types of building frontages are allowed, the design of buildings along certain types of streets. And the streetscape between the building and the sidewalk, so it's a little less street-oriented than that other section of code. But because certain uses are allowed, so for instance, on the type one complete streets, drive-throughs aren't allowed on those frontages. Having that in the downtown, once the downtown zone's put into place, this is a pretty integral part of making that code work. So this is the Plan Commission's recommended designation for those complete streets. It talks a little bit more about this in the staff report, the reason for all these designations and kind of what they mean. I can talk a little bit about these if you have questions, but.
Chris, I do have a question. This is Lori again. Is, are these, are these, is the complete streets a little bit more like design guidelines for centers and corridors that we worked on?
Yeah, it's not exactly that, but that's, in terms of the concept, yes, it's a lot more similar to that than like the design of the street itself. So it's more design-oriented, how if the building has to be built up to the street versus setback, things like that, based on, like you see second and third are a community connector, I believe it's called, where it's recognizing that these are more of a high-traffic street versus the purple is your most pedestrian-oriented.
Hey, Chris, this is Candace. I think that looks like it goes all the way to the railroad on the north, where that pedestrian mall is going to be. Can you explain what the latest is on that?
Yeah, so that is something, as we, there's a few items in terms of code that kind of go beyond just the district, but are code issues that have come up. And that's, that's a good example of one of them is technically the Sherman Plaza is not a street, it's a platted lot. So the recommendation throughout the planning process has been to treat that like a type one complete street in terms of the uses that are allowed along that and having buildings up to the, you know, making that a more pedestrian-oriented area. But currently, the code doesn't specify that, and so, but it, but it's something that affects zone, it affects all the downtown zones to make that code change. So it's kind of a potential next step to really reinforce that, if that's something that council wants to carry forward.
I guess I just want to make sure that that portion is going to be pedestrian and not for vehicles.
It, so in terms of the design, the complete street designation here doesn't really affect like what types of, what would happen, I guess there's no curb there, but curb to curb, essentially. But it would, it would require, for instance, if there was a ground floor use, that it'd have more windows if it's against that street versus, you know, some of the other streets that, like First Street is, has more freight loading on it, for instance. That wouldn't be allowed on this, on Sherman. But it doesn't really affect what vehicles can go there.
Chris, I think we were concerned that the vehicle pedestrian collision of worlds could happen there, because there will be so many pedestrians, based on all the students and faculty that are there, make sure that it's safe for pedestrians and bikes, because those are going to be, that's going to be what is going to be using that, that area.
Yeah, I can, I can look at ways that that could be implemented or kind of what the current situation is on that. We didn't focus in this process on the street itself as much, just because we're looking at zoning, and so it's really looking at the building side of it. But this is, in terms of the way that that, that having that type one designation there does in terms of the way the buildings are laid out, it's the most pedestrian-friendly layout. But as you mentioned, there's a lot that goes on in the street that just was outside of the scope of this.
So Chris, do we have a designation for a pedestrian-only transportation facility?
I'm not sure in terms of the streets themselves. We don't have like a complete street type that does that, because it really just is, is looking at the private property side of the right-of-way. But that would kind of fall also under that. It wasn't, wasn't part of what we looked at here, but I can, I can see what's, what the situation is with that and kind of how to follow up.
Right, because I think that's what, we want to protect that. And my concern is just making it a type one, people might think, oh, well, we can put cars up there. And we worked really, really hard to get STA and the vans that they were talking about off of that, just for the reason Councilman, Councilwoman Kinnear discussed, and had them move to east-west. So I just, if there's any way we could do some sort of a protected overlay, it's supposed to be a pedestrian mall with, I think, bicycle path.
Yeah, I think in terms of this, like the complete streets in this section, I can, I can send a citation of code. I don't have a lot of detail on the slide in terms of what these do, but they don't really do anything as far as like what, what happens in the street itself. The concern was that if it's not a street right-of-way, like is not on the complete street map that in terms of how buildings front along it, it could be treated to, like it's just two abiding buildings rather than a building and a plaza.
Thank you.
Chris, this is Lori again. If there's something that council can do to help you make sure that we can get to what Candace, Councilmember Mub and I are interested in, let us know.
Yeah, I'll talk to some of the other planners and figure out what the different processes we have going on, like what's the best way to get to that, to what the goal you described with the pedestrian safety in that plaza.
Thank you.
Thanks. So another overlay, this is the surface parking limited overlay. So this map shows where that currently is located. It's kind of in the downtown core. It prohibits new commercial surface parking lots in the primary use. So basically, if you're putting in a new building and you are serving it with a surface parking lot, that's okay. If you're putting in a parking structure and leasing it out, that's okay. But if you're putting in a surface parking lot and leasing it out without serving a building specifically, that would be prohibited in this overlay. The staff report talks about, about the pros and cons of this one. The thought was that, we got a lot of feedback from stakeholders about spillover parking already from downtown and from the universities in this area, and concern that they could lose some of the buildings in that area for surface parking lots that then wouldn't really be used to support the remaining businesses, because be used to support the remaining businesses because people would be coming in and, and kind of using it as a way to park of, kind of away from downtown or the university. So this is that recommended boundary again, so it would extend that overlay into that DTU zoned portion of the district. And then the design review overlay, so there's different areas where design review applies to different building types. And what, what the threshold for things going to design review is, all public buildings go to design review. The perimeter area that's recommended for the South U District is the highest threshold. So until the building gets to 50,000 square feet, it wouldn't go to design review if it's a new building. And that's consistent with what's on the campus across the tracks. So then the recommendation from Plan Commission was also to extend that into the DTU zoned portion of the district. So the next steps, there's going to be the ordinance and the resolution coming up. We tried to kind of put those together as much as we could. It's a big, big day as the public hearing would be August 24th on those map amendments. And then again, different kinds of sources of information, but also even contact me of course. And yeah, I can take any questions.
What questions do you have? Go ahead and shout them out.
Chris, real quick, in terms of the height limitations, I guess, not the biggest deal in the world because as you said, there's not a lot of plans right now for anything above 12 stories. But, you know, I could envision in the future, you know, perhaps some, some opportunities like that coming our way. Is there any ability to maybe see a little bit more higher height limits right there in that, in that zone?
There's some density bonuses that apply in terms of certain trade-offs for amenities in the downtown zones like DTU, if there was a building that, you know, wanted to exceed 12 stories. And those are, those are already in the downtown code, but they'd be amended, they'd need to be amended through the downtown code since there's DTU outside of the sub-area as well.
Okay.
But yeah, it would be kind of within that system or.
Do you know what they have to do to qualify for the bonus?
There's kind of a list of things. I can, I can, I can add that to, kind of that list of that.
That, yeah, that's great. And then if you haven't already, could you just send the, the full presentation?
Yes.
Great.
I will send it.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you so much, planning team. Chris, I know you've been working on this for a long time and Cheryl. It'll be good to bring it to us when we get back.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. Am I the sponsor on this?
I believe Council President Beggs is the.
Okay, cool. Sounds good. Just checking in, we did not heard from Councilmember or Council President Beggs, so I believe we will not be discussing the CARES Act funding. And if there is not anything else to come before us, I think we are going to sign off. There may be a special meeting tomorrow. Is that what I'm seeing? Either Hannah Lee and Brian McClatchy, is that correct?
Yes, there's a special meeting at 9:30. You should all have the WebEx information.
All right. We will see you tomorrow at 9:30. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.[1778.01]